Live. Okay, everyone, welcome to the meeting of planning and infrastructure at Ramsgate Town Council on the ninth of October, twenty twenty four. And the first thing, apologies.
Chair, we have apologies from councillor Wean, personal matter.
Councillor Wean. Are there any declarations of interest?
Thank you.
No? Yes, okay, please turn your phones off. And the minutes, the last meeting of the eleventh of September. Do we have a proposal for those, councillor Austin and the second one? Councillor Nixey, all those in favour? I don't think councillor Orban is here.
I wasn't here.
No. Um, planning applications.
Thank you. First application is twenty nine Grove Road. Just getting that on the screen for you. Just got to find it, there we are. Uh, change of use from one four bed dwelling to two two bed dwellings, together with erection of the two storey side and rear extensions, extension to roof, alterations to fenestration, and erection of cycle stores following demolition of existing garage and conservatory. Called in by councillors Austin and Wean. Reason for calling on grounds of potential overdevelopment and effect on neighbours, potential overdevelopment in an area with a number of other densely occupied properties. Thank you.
So councillor Austin.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, but I think all of the things on this list this evening are ours. I do apologize. We wanted to have a closer look at this. We have been and had a look at the property and it is quite a substantial double fronted property with space around the side. But it is in quite a densely populated area, as we've said, and neighbours are concerned. So we thought we would have a closer look at it.
I would point out that most of the objections are to do with parking, which is a valid objection, but not of planning. No, not planning that.
It will come to another one later where it's exactly the same.
Yes.
So that's the...
So you've got, this is existing.
Existing, yeah.
Garages there, they're coming from that.
Yeah.
Side and that side.
I divided.
Yes, councillor.
This is at the other end of the alleyway.
Sorry?
It's the other end of the alleyway, North Avenue.
It's a, it's a dead end end, yeah.
Lot of flats, lot of garages that have been vacant for a long time. Very troublesome area. I think here might, I think the people that rent the properties out, they had their wish made and they've done a good job. But I think they might have walked away from that because it seemed like any time thick and hairy they're facing. I shouldn't say that, I suppose.
So you're saying the garages aren't used?
Oh, no, they're not.
Oh, they are used.
They're not used.
Oh, they're not?
Been troubled for a long time.
Right, okay, councillor Orban.
I can't see anything wrong with it, chair. I can't see anything wrong with it, with the application. So it's right over there in the, over there in the parcel. It fits in, the design fits in with the lower roof of that, of that extension to the, to the main building, which would make two nice, comfortable flats.
I think it'll be okay.
So I can't see a problem.
Good, it's rooms.
Yes, and that itself surprised at how many, how they've managed to.
Yes. Are there any, yes.
If no one else has got anything to say, chair, I've, I've...
I was having a comment.
Yeah, that's what, if it tidies the site up, that's good news. People can live there, it's in battle. Other markets, parking isn't a big issue, any of the people.
Absolutely, yeah.
They do it.
We can't comment on that. I'm quite happy for us to make no comment on this, having had a lot of it.
Second. Second, yeah, councillor Austin. And all those in favour? So that's my comments.
Your second application is the workshops rear of one seven five High Street. Erection of three dwellings comprising two two bed dwellings and one one bed dwelling following demolition of existing workshops, together with installation of air source heat pumps, solar panels, and alterations to landscaping and parking. Called in by councillors Austin and Wean. Reason for calling is the dark design, except she looks fine and they have provided parking, which is great, but it's quite squashed and I'm concerned about the effect on the neighbours. So I'd like, like us to take a closer look, potentially of overdevelopment.
The reason that there's so many comments at the end is because both Becky's and Mike's are in there. Becky's is the short one, mine is the long, you won't be surprised to learn.
And the problem is if it's off the high street, it's in Moncton Place, that's the name of the place.
It's not, no, this isn't the Moncton Place one, this is the one on the corner of South Eastern Road behind the Jehovah's Witnesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've put it, it's a really nice looking design.
Yes.
Uh, the main problem again is parking, they're taking away parking spaces and the TDC Wastes want to add, want to take a parking space for bins rather than put the bins where the architects were suggesting. So there is concern from neighbours about that, but actually neighbours are generally happy with the way that it has been dealt with and with the level of consultation with them that there has been.
It is an interesting design.
So could you go back to the street? I can't quite work out where it is, sorry.
It's right at the top of the high street on the corner where South Eastern Road goes that way and the high street goes that way and there's the Jehovah's Witnesses building there. There's flats all the way up this bit of South Eastern Road and there's two semis there.
Right.
They have problems regularly with getting their bins collected. And so we have a lot of dealings with them. And it's in behind there, it's behind the Jehovah's Witnesses building and those two semis.
Okay, thank you.
And do it, do it. Councillor Orban.
Uh, chair, I mean, as much people change these things, banging on about, we shouldn't be building on green sites or green land. This is a brownfield site in the middle of the town effectively. And I can't think of a better use for it, you've got houses on it. And as you say, as councillor Austin says, the, the, the actual design of the houses is good.
The attractive design.
They're right, they're right, there is, as you say, maybe a little issue about parking, but I think overall, chair, I can't see why we would comment in, in the negative about it.
Okay, councillor.
That was, that's my view.
Councillor Shonk.
How's the access, how is the access to the?
The access to is also...
Big enough for?
Southeast.
Five, isn't it?
Yeah. I think, I, I do like the way this, it's Delrenzi, is it?
Delrenzi, it's again.
They present their works so that it's very easy to read.
Yeah.
Um, the, does anyone know, presumably the workshops aren't being used?
No, I think they've been used for quite some time.
I think it used to be part of Danic Brands, it used to be an industrial part, they used to sell brands off that high street, but since then lots of big changes, probably the rest of the buildings that used to have.
Right, okay, do, do we have a proposal?
Well, propose no comment, chair.
Yes, any second, does? Yeah, councillor Austin. All those in favour of no comment?
Okay, thank you, members. Number three is one five four High Street. It's in relation to trees. Sycamore tree to be removed and the stump poisoned with Epo plugs to prevent regrowth. Elder flower to have three of its lowest stems removed. Cypress T three and T four removal is close to the boundary wall. And T five, which is a cypress again, contacting the boundary wall to be reduced in height by approximately three metres. Councillor Wean called this one in. It's in the conservation area and she's concerned about the loss of tree cover in an area short of trees. Thank you, members.
This is the old Bets surgery, isn't it?
Yes. The leisure centre, there's already been substantial removal of small trees at the inner site of the leisure centre because all of that area has all grown up dramatically.
The elder flower and the cypress are not being moved.
No.
They've just been treated.
Yes, which makes sense.
Aren't sycamores a problem?
A weed.
Sycamores are regarded as a weed, aren't they? Although...
Well, I, I, we've got a substantial tree, because I mean, you can have massive sycamores. It's just that they, when they shed their seed and, and their seeds are more prone to growing than any others.
Seeds.
I think, you know, I think if I was a sycamore, I would be, I would be upset a bit.
Where the sycamore is?
It's T one on, on the screen there.
On the end.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
Is that, sorry, chair, is that the only picture that we've got?
That's the only plant.
So after felling, which is T, T one and...
And T one will be felled, which is a sycamore. And the stump poisoned, so...
And the green fall.
The others, T two, which is elder flower, it's going to have its three lowest stems removed. And T three for removal as, as it's there, close to the boundary wall. And T five is actually contacting the boundary wall, so they want to reduce in height by three metres.
And that's why I think two and five, we're getting rid of them.
Two to five, yeah.
And that's the leisure centre underneath, isn't it?
That side.
Yeah.
Can I just, if that's a leisure centre and that's the alleyway?
No, it's not, it's the other side of the, it's the other side of the leisure centre.
Because the other one, oh, the alley bit, the trees are actually holding the wall up.
Yeah, well, we've already, they've already done the one, one four four High Street because the landlords were complaining that they couldn't get to the wall to do the refurbishment works they needed to do and there was more trying down.
Councillor Nixey. I am, I'm all in favour, as I've said before, of like managing trees. I don't see a problem with, um, felling them even looking after them because they need to be managed and often they can grow as weeds as well. Just because that's a tree doesn't mean to say that's a good thing. Right, however, I mean, it'd be quite nice to know if there are plans to reintroduce any more trees in a better area in that, either in that site. Or I don't know what the deal with a private application form is of like, you know, contributing or donating a tree to a different site or something like that.
There's nothing in the plans to indicate that.
It's just a private house.
It is, yes.
Yes, with a huge bathroom, yes.
I'm not too clear there.
It's difficult to tell, isn't it?
Councillor Orban.
Um, I'm just surprised really, looking at, looking at that and the, the T three, uh, side pressure removal is close to boundary wall. What, they're all close to the boundary wall. It's not just the one, it's not just the only one that's close to the boundary wall. If you look at number two and number three, they're both close to the boundary wall. As is number five.
Can I answer that, if you don't mind? I don't, I get what you mean, but if they're lifting up the canopy of the, of T two, it might be able to grow next to the boundary wall but above it, but whereas the other one, because it's lower down, might be...
Yeah, well, I'm saying they want to remove T three.
Yeah.
But they could, they could, um, work, take, do work on T three to reduce its height and as they want to do with T two. And I can't, because otherwise I can't see any reason for it to be...
I don't think it's reducing its height, I think it's a case of like it's too short at the moment, possibly.
Sorry, I got it wrong.
No, 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 what I'm saying is with T two, they're taking off the lower branches. So they're obviously lifting the canopy above the wall or something, that's the idea I'd have thought.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And if it's lower, it's actually might be, because it's also, I mean, we can't, we've only got that to go on, so...
Yeah, it's exactly what councillor Shonk says and I, I think he's, to make a decision on this is...
Yes, I don't quite understand why they want to remove.
All I can say, chair, if, if I may, that if any trees are to be removed, then they should, as has been said.
Be replaced.
That's it, they should be replaced.
Replaced.
Um, whether, whether it's there or it's somewhere else in the conservation area.
Yes.
So.
Councillor Shonk.
Like I say, our lots are in the better, totally right. You don't buy view anymore, do you? You don't buy views, then are the trees just blocking some view or, we always love trees, but...
Doesn't, it's blocking anybody's view.
No, but it's a...
Well, it doesn't matter whether it's blocking someone's view or not, that's, that's totally irrelevant.
But it's not, it's up against the, just a really black wall of the leisure centre.
The sycamore is a big tree, so...
Yeah, I'm all for that, it's supposed to, I'm all for taking the sycamore out. It's a normal place.
I'm sorry, I can't quite work out, are those steps?
Yeah.
On the left?
Steps down, yeah.
From what?
Must be, must be a walkway up the top, just, just below that roof?
It isn't, can I explain what that is?
Have you been, yeah.
Because actually, I know somebody was talking about the site for me a few months back and they, there's katers and kennels, it's a lot of concrete. They're actually trying, from what I remember, this is, I don't know if people don't get it wrong, but to clear the site to make it into more of a garden, something was suggesting. So I think the idea, and I'm not, like I say, I don't know...
No, that makes sense.
But they were saying they'd have to remove that to be able to do it.
Yes, yeah, that makes sense. And then presumably the dogs or cats or whatever exercise in that quite big garden.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I make a proposal, chair, I think the majority of us are quite happy for the, for the sycamore to go.
Yes.
And the sycamore to be removed. So if we say, we, we, we support the removal of the sycamore, however, the removal of the sycamore and the removal of the suppressor should be replaced with two other trees.
I've got that in there, I've already been that.
Is that okay?
Did you second it?
Basically, all those in favour? Have replaced or something?
Yeah, everybody's... Special branch, right.
Thank you. It's all right now. Your next application is at Quick Fit, which is two West Cliff Road. Erection of a three, four and five storey building following demolition of the existing buildings to provide twenty one self-contained flats. That's three one bed, sixteen two bed and two three bed, together with a commercial unit, which is a dentist, at ground floor level and excavation to allow parking at basement level with associated access and landscaping. Dean's shown me this, it's underground parking with a lift with disabled bays and they will be able to come up in the lift to go to the new dentist as well.
Councillor Shonk.
There's nothing quicker than a quick, quick treat. Now, my daughter went there the other day to have her car done and said, why are you closing? She said the landlords preempted everything, they've got a four year lease and the cost of money, good people.
That, that is actually a relevant comment.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, oh, sorry, councillor Orban, sir.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure whether I should make a declaration of interest here, chair, because some months ago, um, I met with the developer, he asked to meet with me here, which he did, and he showed me his plans that he was going to put forward, and I'm talking six months, seven months ago, that he was going to put forward. And in that conversation, he did state that the, that when the lease runs out, Quick Fit were not, the management of the Quick Fit, I'm not talking about the owner, but the management of Quick Fit, were happy not to be there. And so he wanted to take advantage of that at the end of the lease to come in with an application. And he asked my point of view and I said, obviously, I can't, you know, I'm not in any power, I said, but the plans that you showed me look all right, I said, but there's no definition on it. So I couldn't give any, so I think really I should bow out of this conversation because of that.
Because we're not the deciding.
I know that, chair, but, but even so, I think I should, I should not say it.
I'm, even though I'm an ethical ward, I'm getting a lot of complaints, a lot of people very anxious about this and one of the reasons, and one of the main reasons is the excavation of the basement. So you've got listed buildings, listed Georgian buildings along there, right next to it and everything, and they are really, really worried about that element of excavation to then to be able to build because already, you know, where they are, um, uh, element of work that's been done before, it's affected housing apparently. I also, I'm, I mean, personally, I think it's too much for that site. I can understand it being an infill, but when you actually look at that and it's a really big example, so the road comes down and so those houses in the sort of like the far ground of like the original Georgian terrace are a certain height. So the road goes down, these are even higher. I just think, you know, even if you just took that like top bit off, I think it is too much, it's very, it's very demanding, it's a very solid piece in somewhere that was sort of like a low rise building up for, for, above and below, I think it's a bit much.
I think it's a shame that they don't show, they do at the back, but they don't show an elevation with the existing buildings on either side. Um, and there is a rear one that shows the height of the terrace and to the west of it. Um, have you got the back elevation, please? Yeah, there, so you can see a sort of chateau of the Georgian houses, so it's not going higher than those at, at point. And if you carry on down the road, there are some four story, five story properties, it is opposite five story property in Queen's House, is it? And the Vicen Court, which is a bit further down, is also five stories. So I think it's difficult, I, I, that is not addressing the problem at the basement, which I would have thought was a building wrecks thing. Councillor?
At the point of information, chair, there is already a basement.
Yeah.
There is an existing basement.
There is, but they were going to excavate.
I'm just saying, there is an existing basement, there's always been there.
But it's the excavation that I think a lot of people are very worried about.
But that, I don't think is a planning matter, that would be structural building wrecks.
Under the building wrecks, yeah.
Under building wrecks, the excavation. Councillor Shonk.
No, you don't know the history, but what the coast types are using, but use that big mound, there's going to be a lot of chalk to be moved, if you're going to build, if you are going to build these places, can't they blend in with the rest of West Cliff Road, the street scene? Because you've got lots of developments going on in that same road that doesn't even blend in, the opposite of Manchester Hospital. That's supposed to be a street scene. I mean, if you can have houses, which will probably happen, can't we have and build what we own? I mean, this is where you can see Wamsley.
Yes.
And this.
I mean, I personally, I like the design and I think it's good to fill in that site. I can understand, it is an area where everybody was concerned, just because of the area that it is, but it doesn't invalidate what they're saying. The only thing is Ivy Lane, there are three houses at the, at the bottom there that will be, have their light cut off. Um, the bulk of the building is at the front of the site, in line with the other buildings in the street. And I think the more accommodation, the more people we have in the town, is going to help the prosperity of the town. And so I would be in favour of it whenever it might happen. Sorry, councillor Austin.
Um, yes, I mean, I, I agree with you, chair, I think it's, you know, it's back to what councillor Orban said about, one of the previous ones, is it's good to have, you know, a brownfield site where, where we can actually provide realistic accommodation for a large number of people. I do share Nixon's concerns about the size fit, I'd rather see it a room or less, but I do see what you're sending with Queen's House there, what can you do there? Um, from, it was councillor Wean who called it in and she attended the Heritage Design Forum earlier this week and is, is reassured by what she has heard there and the Heritage Design Forum, people apparently are, are in favour of it, mostly because of the attractive design.
They forget their, their comments.
They don't get it, they only get it on the, on the, on the portal. Don't, we see them on the portal, but we don't get their...
They do send them, but it's usually...
It tends to be later, yes, because I think, I think it was last night or the night before.
Okay, councillor Shonk.
On myself, I think it's overload, I think if I lived in Bangs, I'd walk down Ivy Lane, it's quite a, it won't be a lane anymore, it'll be blocked out, it'll be shadow, shadow lane. I think it's overload on that area. It probably happened one day, but I don't think I'd be voting for it. I think we should really listen to people that live in that area. Have we got many concerns from people?
Mainly about, well, parking, again.
Parking and light, yes.
Yeah, the houses around, really.
Yeah.
Down the grand pub.
Yeah. And sorry, councillor Nixey.
Well, I was going to propose, I'm not against putting something on it, but I am going to propose that, that as, I'm very pleased to see a brownfield site being used, but I do think that the amount that's being asked for that particular site is overdevelopment and in terms of the, the size and structure of the building.
I, I think if you compare it to, well, Vicen Court, which is just down below it.
It's something we have to keep improving things to the point where we maximize everything. I mean, when you take something, three thousands an industrial building for offices, it's not life for life, is it?
That's, that's not...
Totally, Vicen Court, yeah.
Vicen Court, yeah.
Chair, if I could just say, what you're looking at for over there, you're looking at the bulk of it, so if there are buildings, doesn't matter what they're used for, of a similar bulk, either opposite or down the road, whatever, should, should this get refused by us, obviously, by TDC? Yeah, they will appeal, because I know, I know the...
They will.
Developer, they, they will appeal and that's one of the reasons that they will use. Come and have a look down here, come and have a look over there, this is not, they will say, not me, but they will say, this is not outgiving.
No.
Not outgiving.
I agree with that.
So I'll just say to be tactful, I would say, is to, is to whatever you decide, but, you know.
Yeah. Um, no, I think it's, it's quite a pleasant design and I think it fits in and I think the bulk of it is kept away from Ivy Lane and the three houses there that are treated. I mean, just behind Ivy Lane, the other road, Hart Street, is the tower block, let's say, yeah. Um, yes, councillor Shonk.
Honestly, I think I should vote against this because I think it is overload, it probably happened, whether I have to say or not. Uh, we pulled down Allen's Avenue Club to build and that place is empty ever since they pulled it down and the wonderful amenity we used to have in Ramsgate and that's not far down the road, yeah.
We could, we can't do anything.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
It's lots of buttons, isn't it? I mean, some of these houses, they've been built.
I mean, this may...
It's a street scene, I would have been told in, you know, when we've read to see around, it's a street scene.
This, this may not happen, it may get left, whatever, but that is not what we're concerned about here.
So we've got a proposal on the table from councillor Nixey.
All right.
Um, basically, RTC is pleased to see the brownfield site being used, but raises concerns with the size of development.
Yeah, I'd second that.
All those in favour? Right, those against?
Please, chair, mate.
So, you need to...
You've got the same vote, haven't you?
Well, I have voted.
Yes.
When you've got, you've got the chair's vote, that is still there.
So that, that's a bit...
That falls. And I would propose that we welcome the development commission on the brownfield site. And otherwise have no comment. I would like to say...
Chair, if I may, I'm going to do that on, on the grounds that the, the design is suitable for the, for the area it's located in and...
Yeah, okay.
That, that is well. Obviously, I'm not...
Okay, well, I'll second that, so those in...
No, it's not proposal.
Oh, it's my proposal.
You need seconding either councillor Shonk, myself or councillor Austin to second it.
Okay.
I'm not.
Well...
Nobody's seconding it.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay.
I know that someone can say anything, but I'll second it, just so you can vote on it.
Yeah, so that is in favour. Okay. Two. Okay, are you abstaining?
Absolutely.
Okay, that falls. Right, so I don't know, you've got the comment territory, yeah. Well, I do agree with what councillor Orban says, that I think it fits in well with the streets.
No, but do you know what, I think that's the reason the point in that stage, I mean, No, but do you know what? I think that's the key to the point in that, so I mean, I don't think any of us of us are objecting. To the style and so on and so forth, that's the whole idea, it's just to just to scale it down just slightly, and it's just, it's just a bit too much. I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Yeah, it's attractive.
Just you don't have to maximize everything, can you?
I'll be done.
Yep.
Please, so it's no comment, members.
Yeah.
Okay, uh the next one is the Royal, um the application has, uh they've been granted permission. Dean will show you what they, what has been granted already. Uh you've looked at this twice, um.
Right.
And you've you've said that it's bulky, obtrusive, out of character. They've they've now changed this. Uh so they've got permission for, if you wouldn't mind talking members through, Dean, please.
So originally, they were in filling this.
Yes.
And then it's coming right up in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Uh they've already got permission for that, what they're doing now is removing this part of the building, coming on level and across.
Oh my god.
Yeah, that's what they're late in. So yeah, they're removing that and then just coming level.
All the other designs are the same.
Counselor Orpens.
Oh. To make that, I mean, they they just looked weird.
Yeah.
Um and I'm not sure about, so they've already got consent towards the building.
Yeah.
Uh which has been agreed, obviously, been agreed, they've got the same. I I wouldn't go with that, too.
Counselor Nixon, were you next?
Yeah, I just, we, when we spoke about this before, we were talking about the fact that it's your immediate view from the sea, isn't it? This is the um the vista that you get when you are looking at Ramsgate from from the sea. And that is just not showing us in our best light, I'm afraid, I'm very much against this.
Counselor Austin?
Yes, I went to Planning Committee to uh raise concerns about the previous design and um Planning Committee did not agree. And this is just taking the same thing and making it more so. It's it's obtrusive, it's large, it's. It's the the entrance is wholly inappropriate for a. Row of historic buildings, those those little doors down at the bottom there in the.
Doesn't fit at all.
They they had a lovely big arched entrance that was suitable, and now they've got that, which is like the back of your house.
I've done it to make it, that's what I think.
But they've done it, it looks like a back of your house. It's very disappointing, but I'm not at all surprised, it's exactly what we thought they'd probably try and do. And it's not, it's not suitable for our seat.
Members, you your two um comments before were the proposal is bulky, obtrusive. Out of character with the conservation area and not in keeping with the street scene, this is recommended that the application is rejected. So that went for the other one. You you could repeat if you wish.
Yes, just for what we say.
Exactly, and put that in.
Yeah, he's got more information.
Just to add as well, obviously, the sign, TC wasted content that.
Probably, that would be the case now, but all that's going to be altered with the levelling up front. But that's besides the point, that you've got to deal with what we've got now, but.
But didn't they say in it that all the shops along there have got a similar problem?
Yes.
Yeah, so it doesn't make it.
Not, it's not unique to that.
No.
You'll need a.
Oh, we go with the previous comments.
Seconded, okay, all those in favour, and I'm against.
Okay, um members, the last application for this meeting is uh land adjacent to one Carlton Avenue. It's the erection of a one, three bed dwelling with associated access and parking. Uh called in by Counselor Austin on possible development, overdevelopment, sorry, and effect on neighbours. Uh there was a previous application as detailed on the screen for you. Um Ramsgate Town Council objects to this application on the grounds of overdevelopment and will seek the planning officer's advice. In relation to the land which RTC understands was to be used as a parking area for the property next door. As part of that property's previous approved planning application. That previous application was withdrawn, so this is. A replacement of that.
Counselor Austin?
So this is basically the same design as we saw before, but it's now a house where it would have been. So that that reduces to some degree, the parking concerns or whatever, but there's still serious parking problems around there.
Hmm.
Um but, yeah, but like everywhere, um. Well, I haven't had any answers, I've asked questions about the uh.
Yes, we don't. I mean, I tend to think that's a really, really ugly design, but um. I don't. I think we have to accept that a single house fits in fine, yes.
Chair, I mean, as you know, as Counselor said, the previous one was flats, this is a single dwelling. Design's very good, there's a bit of character about it. Um there is off-street parking for two vehicles.
Yeah.
Um I can't see.
I can't see.
Well, we will be negative.
I agree, and our previous objections were, I know, were have have obviously been listened to. Mind you, having two parking spaces takes two parking spaces away from the street, but um.
But they're going to be parked on the street in front of it.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Counselor Shonk. Both sides of that street, all done.
Counselor Shonk?
It looks lovely and glossy, it probably will be when it's built. It's a shame that they alter their plans as soon as they get one built. All of a sudden, the car park spaces are, is a house for. Way of the world, I think, today.
I understand what you mean by that, Counselor Shonk.
Well, I think they've got the house there, then they've got the planning to use it as a car park.
We think that.
Now they've got that, they want.
Your house had had that as its parking space, and that was the condition of its planning. But I have asked the officer and they haven't come back to me, so I don't.
Well, I mean, e- even so, if that if that was the case, that that's irrelevant, that's up to them, whether they decide. That that would be, if if that was, is it this side that was parking?
No.
The right hand side or the left hand side?
In the middle there.
No, 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 it's the new house. What I mean is, what's which property had, so that one had that as parking. Well, if they have got an issue with it, then it's for them to take legal action against that company. But in planning terms, you can't take a view on, you've got to deal with the application as is, and as it is. Uh this.
Actually, it doesn't look so bad on that elevation. I don't like those white, those pointy bits.
Pointy bits, no, they're not.
Yeah.
I'm only going to make a comment. It's a lovely old town that has been bought back. I knew the chaplain, it, Council Thrillerton, there's Mayor Boardsters. Those two properties there, the car, the garages, I used to rent one. And that's what they built one, Chair.
Yeah, I I suppose you have to promise.
I'll check it out, Chair.
Second that, all those in favour? Uh.
I might pick on that.
You're. Right, okay.
Not sticking to the original plan, were they?
The original plan was for flats, isn't it?
No. It's half on the house, and they should keep that place around the car park, and that's gone out the window.
Yeah, but you've got to deal with what's your fund, you can't, you can't.
Right, so members, that's your exit for your planning applications.
You?
Right, um the neighbourhood plan?
Yeah, the next item is neighbourhood plan. I've got um notes from uh the town clerk for you. Uh basically, this is to um note the documents that you've received, um. Town clerk says that this is a summary of the feedback received following the recent consultation around the aims of the neighbourhood plan. It might seem that consulting on the aims is a backward step, given we very nearly have a completed plan, but this was an area of our previous consultation work. That needed updating. There is a lot of detail about who was consulted in the covering report. This will be essential information when the plan goes to the planning inspector. We need these facts and figures to demonstrate that we've communicated with residents. The town clerk and mayor's secretary will now go through the responses, many of which don't actually relate to the neighbourhood plan. Won't be ignored, we'll point them in the right direction, for example, TDC or KCC, which I think is is a good idea. Uh Dave Checkwin will help us figure out what to do with the comments that are relevant to the neighbourhood plan. So you're you're just asked, being asked to note this information that's been supplied so far, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor Austin, could I ask that we put together, or town clerk puts together a statement. That explains again what a neighbourhood plan is, that it's a planning document, it's not about twenty one mile limits or all the other things that people are obviously concerned about. And that is included in the response to everybody.
Mm hmm.
So not not in a, obviously not in a sort of snotty way to say that they're they're objection. That, you know, this doesn't concern the neighbourhood plan because this is what a neighbourhood plan is, but we'll pass your concern.
Yeah, I think.
But we advise you to contact, or whatever the town clerk.
That's exactly what um the town clerk and mayor's secretary are planning to do, that's that's great.
That's great, thank you, Bishop.
Okay, so um we note that, we note that.
Noted.
Yeah.
Um I think.
I think the important, sorry, Chair, I I I think the important thing for this is that. When we put in a complete document, it goes to TDC first, and if they have a plan, they'll look at it and they'll. Just see whether anything should be added or things should be taken out. So that gives, and it may come, the likelihood, they always come back.
Come back, yeah.
So but it but that that would then give us guidance of what we're falling down on or what we've been good at. And so that when it can, so if we deal with those, then that will go off then to the Secretary of State for.
I mean, I personally find it very bland, and it could almost be written about any seaside down in the country.
We are where we are.
Yeah, we are where we are, yeah.
It's not a much exciting team in the whole world, are they?
At least if you've got one, then we can, then we can add to it.
I think once we've got one.
You just need to get one, that's the thing.
So the date and time of the next meeting, Wednesday, thirteenth of November.